Call the meeting to order, start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
A book where we just stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice.
We usually have students do that for us at a public meeting, so we were kind of, I looked at Jim and he looked at me like huh?
Can I get a motion on the minutes of December fourteenth?
Move to approve.
And a second, okay, any discussion or comments? Okay, and Larry's, there's Larry, hello Larry.
I'll write to know, he needs to.
So we need to do this as a roll call vote. All in favor of the minutes as written, Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Dawn?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And yes for myself, and I also need a motion on the minutes of December sixteenth.
So moved.
Okay, and roll call vote, all in favor, Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Dawn?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yes for myself.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the remote attendee still needs to state your.
Oh yeah, Larry, could you just tell us where you are and whether you're accompanied or not?
Yes, my name is Larry Heath, I'm in my, I'm in my office and there is nobody present but me.
We'll have to get back to you because we couldn't hear you.
Okay, would you like me to do it again?
You're coming back up, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Larry Heath, I'm in my office at my home, there is nobody present but me.
Thank you. So with the board's permission, we have some people in the audience here that I think are probably here to, hear about the sports presentation rather than the approvals of the donations. So if there's no objections, I'd like to move the, the hearing on the, on the sports till now, to now, instead of doing the donations. Or the communications or committee reports, I'd just like to start off with the hearing on the sports.
Would the board like Mr. Dawson to present his proposal and then allow public comment before vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Guys a chance to speak, so.
Don't bother you.
Yep.
Thank you.
I had more time to do it.
It takes as long as you have to do it, right?
Kind of a built in excuse to mess it up. Which is always helpful. So I think it's important that we look at the context for the proposal, and it's really nothing more than that. I've been getting a lot of emails today from people saying, I made, we've made a decision, we haven't made a decision. We're just, this is something that we're, I believe we should talk about. This evening is a way to respond to something that was really worrisome to me over the last week or so. As we were looking at the numbers overall, really the last couple of weeks. In the last three weeks, we've had a really worrying uptick in the number of cases among our student athletes of COVID. Not just close contacts, but actual cases. As of today, we've had in the last three weeks, eleven student athletes have been identified as COVID positive. That's out of one hundred and thirty-four kids or, and the data I mentioned earlier today had a mistake in the math. So it's about eight percent of our kids have tested positive. If you take that out to the entire student body of high school and the middle school, about eight hundred and something students, that would be like having sixty kids in the, in this school building, all testing positive in a three week period. And so when you start to put it in that context, it's a really, really worrisome number of kids in a very short period of time that has tested positive. Now, I think it's important, and based on a lot of the emails I've been getting today, there's a feeling that people have that I'm trying to say that this is all because of athletics and it's, you know, and I get a lot of people saying you can't prove any, we don't know where people are getting this disease. It could be at practice, it could be at Subway. We don't know, and I think it's really important that we understand that. So the discussion that we had yesterday amongst the leadership team really revolved around the idea that, you know, how can we safely have athletics when we have this high a number of student athletes that are testing positive in this extremely short period of time? We've had, I believe, something on the neighborhood of, I'm pulling the numbers out of my head because I didn't print the sheet, I didn't print up with me, or didn't bring up with me, but about twenty-five or so cases total in that period. So not much less than half of the kids that we've been testing positive over the last couple of weeks have been athletes. And we don't know why that is, it just is, it's a simple fact that we have to worry about. I went through and I looked at the dates and the quarantine periods and normally, and did a little hypothetical rundown of where we would be, and per, by team, and I'm not going to share specific teams with you because I really don't want any individual students or student athletes to be identified here. That's really important that none of this is related to one or two students. And I got an email today that was basically pointing the finger at one kid, and I was horrified by that. That really, really bothered me a lot, and that absolutely should not happen. But we have, we have one team that would have only been able to practice over the, if they, if we were in normal, regular athletic mode, we would have had eighteen days of possible practice over three weeks. One of our teams would have been able to practice two days in that period. Another, and I'm just going right down my list, five days, another one eleven, another one eleven, and another one ten. So it would have severely impacted our program if we had been, if we hadn't made that decision on the twentieth, I believe it was, to shut sports down over the break until Monday, we would have had a huge impact on athletics just from that. Because we would have had all these positive cases coming up and a lot of quarantines going on if we had been in normal athletic mode, which of course we weren't. So, but it just gives you an idea of where we were and why we were so worried about the overall impact on athletics of the positive cases that we have. We haven't made the decision, I think that's really important to point that out. We're just looking for a way to allow our athletes to be safe, and we have this worrying uptick says maybe we're not doing that. And also deeply worried about how if this is somehow related to athletics, these kids now come to school and we're not just quarantining the, I don't know, the squash team, I'll just pull a total random team out of my head, and those kids. But now we may have the teachers that need to be quarantined, the classmates that they see during the course of the day. And so a single student athlete might not just impact the thirteen other kids on the squash team, they would then impact all those other students that they deal with in school. And when we've done contact tracing in school, our numbers, we can run with a school-based case, thirty or forty kids that we're contacting and quarantining all at the same time. So that was our concern, and I mean, if I'm not saying this right, Tom will correct me, I'm sure. There were a couple of questions that people asked me on email today that I wanted to clear up. Our seasons are just beginning, we don't have a scheduled varsity athletic contest until next Thursday. That's our first contest on Friday, the girls and boys basketball teams play next Thursday and Friday. We have some scrimmages before that, but a real varsity game doesn't happen until then. The seasons wrap up February vacation week, the NHIA pushed the end of the season back a week to give us a little more time to get everything in, and playoffs will start shortly after that. It is an open tournament, so we can enter any one of our teams in that. So if we were, and I'm not saying we should, if we were to take a break at this point, it, it would be the perfect time, if you will, to impact the beginning of the season, not the critical end of the season. And, uh, yeah, and I already mentioned the other two things that are about the number of cases that we had. So it's just an idea, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of the numbers that we had within the athletic department. We have some more detailed information I sent you earlier today, and I'm going to update that to get the math right on the combined numbers. But it's just something I think we should talk about. Is the, well, the possibility, the possibility was, and I guess I didn't clear that up, this has been in my head all day, is to ask student athletes who want to participate in athletics to go into a remote learning mode, so you separate into sort of two cohorts. So the athletes are with themselves, and the general student population is here. So if we do have continued outbreaks at this level amongst the athletes, it stays within the athletic program or in that particular team, and also doesn't have an impact on the school day where we might have to shut the whole building down because of staffing issues we have. That was really the concern that really drove us to sort of looking and exploring this particular idea. I'll just speak a little bit before we let the public comment to kind of move this forward to. So first of all, I really am grateful that you are here as students. Thank you for being here this evening, and I look forward to hearing what you have to say. There, there are two problems that we're looking at, and we're looking at it from, from a bunch of different lenses. And there were really three basic options that we could choose from. The first basic option that the administrative team considered was not having winter sports, and we did not like that. Right, so I want you to hear that that was really, really a difficult conversation yesterday morning when the admin team met. And the, the second option was to just risk it, see what happens, have, have regular in-person school and have the athletic programs in the winter and see what happens. And frankly, if we had had regular school at the time, the week before Christmas break, you all would have been quarantined through Christmas. All of you, there would have been three hundred and fifty people at least quarantined. If you have twelve people who have COVID, and they all attend eight classes times twenty students per class, it gets to four hundred students in just a few seconds. And then if you take out the number of people that are in the same classes together and in the same grade and reduce even forty or forty percent, you're still in the hundreds of people. We had almost two hundred people quarantining already before Christmas break district-wide. So I want you to understand that the goal of this is not to punish or, or make things difficult for anyone. The goal is to get it so that our kids can do sports and still have in-person school for the other students that aren't participating. That, so that's where we came out with this proposal, is that the third alternative was to say to people, we're happy to have you play sports and we want you to play sports, but we're asking you to play, to choose to be remote during, just during the sport season. Now, the other piece that people are forgetting in the emails that they're sending, this is very important. No one is saying that this is a permanent solution for the entire season, we're saying that we want to be remote for the students participating in sports, and we're going to watch whether or not there's transmission during sports. If we get into this after a while and things aren't transmitting during sports, then we're going to revisit this. But I think it's best for the students to remember that there's another really important point. It would be heartbreaking for you to get four weeks or six weeks into the season and be going to the tournament, and then have an outbreak at the school that prevents you from participating in your tournaments. So there are districts that are actually telling the athletes to be remote during sports so that they can ensure their participation in the athletics that they want to do. I just want you guys to have the best experience that you can have this year. Some of you are seniors, this is really hard, and we want you to be able to participate in sports. The safest way for you to do that is to be remote just during the winter season. It is really hard to do basketball and be in really close proximity with someone considering the science around how COVID is transmitted. It, it is not one hundred percent clear to us as to whether or not the situation with the number of cases was definitely caused by sports. No one knows, right? But we know that we have a group of athletes that got sick. And so we're trying to figure out, is there a correlation? And the only way to do that is to try having y'all play, right? And see what happens, and we want that. So I just, I've received some, some emails from folks today, and the board has, saying, just don't do sports at all, forget it, we just need to have school. Well, not doing sports doesn't guarantee that we're going to have school because we could have an outbreak at school. The positive thing is that throughout this whole horrible situation, we have not seen any evidence of school-wide transmission of COVID. Our measures at school are working, when someone has COVID and we quarantine people, we don't see a group of other people getting COVID. The only time we've seen it is the first week of the, the holiday break, and it was related to a bunch of students in sports, and it wasn't any one student, it was a group. We don't know if that's because they met people outside of school, they might have met them at a rec program. We're just nervous about it, and we want school to stay open. And as, I'm sure as all of you can imagine, especially when staffing gets to be really challenging, the little ones have to stay in school because they can't learn independently at home on a computer. So it's not, I'm just, I just need everyone to just remember, we're trying to think about everyone. Right, there's no one group that's more important than another. So the administration felt strongly that this was a very fair and balanced way to handle this problem, was to say, let's be remote for sports, students that are in athletics. It, it increases the chances that they'll get to play their whole season if there's a school case, and it decreases the likelihood that school will close if there's an outbreak in athletics. Kind of seemed like a win-win to me. So before you all speak, I just wanted you to know that this has been really, really hard. Okay, I want you to know that this is not easy, this is miserable for all of us. And we're here for our kids, and we want you to have the best that you can have under these horrible circumstances. So with that, I think we should turn it over to public comment, if, if anyone would like to, Jamie's got his hand up, Jim?
Just before comment, I have a couple of questions for Bob.
Yeah, sure.
I want to know beforehand, and perhaps the people in the audience might also want to know beforehand. I noticed, so, so we've got eleven of twenty-five cases, as I understood you to say. And so basically forty-four percent of the cases in the school, it triggered the quarantines that put us into shutdown early for three of our schools. Forty-four percent of that was student athletes, is that a correct statement? Eleven of twenty-five?
Yeah, the eleven out of twenty-five, yes. How that would have affected it all depends, of course, on, you know, when kids test positive, if they're already quarantining. There are, there's always the potential in that, you know, child A gets sick, and then the parents are very responsible, keep the other kids home. And so, you know, those kids may be looped into these numbers. It's really hard because I don't want to really put any students out there as being, you know, in that situation, so.
It's not as linear as I kind of described it because of the time.
I'll put it this way, it's not eleven distinct pods of kids. There are definitely connections there at the family level. And so that, I want to be fair about that, so the number may seem a little higher than it is. But at the same time, you could have multiple kids on multiple teams, and so you would have that impact. So there's, you know, like a lot of other things in this, there's no sort of clear cut or clean cut answer to any of this.
I'll ask you another one.
Yeah, that's, I'll give it the best shot.
I noticed that when, when you look at quarantine three weeks out, and so for example, if I look at middle school boys, two cases, twenty-three quarantine. I look at middle-aged girls, one case, zero quarantine.
I think we're trying not to talk about individual numbers per team, if I may be that guy, because I don't want to hang those kids out to dry. Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to identify these.
Is there, is there a reason why the quarantine impact is greater with the boys' basketball than with the girls?
I can explain how that works. So initially what I did is I looked at, when I was trying to figure out how many days of practice would have been impacted. So I went back and I said, okay, we got this kid, and then we're going to add a week. So you take the day the student tested positive, and then I would hop down and add a day. And that's roughly what we do for the quarantine. So it's ten days from the last day the kid had contact with the other athletes. So I'm in practice on January first, I test positive on the third, we start the quarantine for the kids, not from the first, that's the day it was a practice, this starts on the second, and blah, blah, blah math, what I came up with is there are periods of time where the, where the program would have been shut down. Sometimes during that period of time when the program was shut down, an additional kid would test positive, but they wouldn't have been at practice. And so because they wouldn't have been there, there are little holes in there, like the team that would have only had two days of practice, but one of the reasons it worked, it, it worked out where they had a case and then a case. Other teams had overlapping cases. So it made my brain hurt for about an hour and a half this morning, but when I did the map out and figured it out, and I sent it to you guys, that's why it's not as linear as you might think. Where a team might just pop back up for two or three days, and then they're gone again. And another team might be gone for twelve or thirteen days in a row because of the multiple cases and how it kind of lays out, it's a little bit nonlinear like that.
If, if, if the whole team is impacted, a bigger team is going to cause a larger quarantine, is that a fair statement?
Correct, and it also depends partly on how they practice. So let's say the ice hockey team has twenty-one kids, they're all on the ice together. If you had the, I'll just use the girls' basketball program, okay? You might have fifteen varsity and seventeen kids playing sub varsity. If we're really careful and split them, or they don't practice at the same time, we might not lose the whole, might just lose the varsity team, not the JVs, or the other way around. We haven't gotten to that part of the season yet, we just picked our teams last week, or a couple would be right before vacation. So there's that factor as well. So I've, I've looked at this as programs, not so much athletes at this point, or individual teams.
Alright, thanks, I'm just trying to get a.
That's fine.
A better.
And I would like to add one quick thing, because we do have this hearing at six-thirty, and we may have to just take a break, do the hearing, and then, and then have the public comment, that's okay. I just wanted to keep things moving forward tonight, so our athletes can do what they need to do. But, um, the, the other piece that's really important is that I, I'm nervous about, I just don't want to see our kids be remote any longer than they have to be. Right, at school, with their school day. So I got a little bit nervous about what this would have looked like if we had been in person and in school when it all happened. Luckily, we had already been remote for a week before it happened. So it really, when you look at the numbers of cases of COVID, that doesn't necessarily tells you how many people would be quarantined because sometimes you have a student get a case, but they weren't in school the four days before, so we don't have to contact trace. It's really complicated, and I'm not trying to, it's just, I, I would be happy to sit down with anyone and walk them through the process, but it is never clear, one hundred percent clear. It's a lot of conversations, a lot of phone calls, a lot of where were you here, what bus were you on? Were you in this phys ed class, were you in this art class? What, you know, we have to look at every single place for the little kids, it's who were you at recess with? Right, and figuring out whether or not the whole group of recess has to quarantine or not. And, and Mr. Dawson and the administrators are trying to find some creative ways to manage the basketball scheduling of practices to limit that in the future. So again, I, part of what we're asking for is time to work on this, but I don't want to hold up our kids' season, so I think being remote, I'm recommending Bob, what Bob's recommending, I think it's a good idea. But I do also recommend that we continue to watch this closely, and if we can allow students to go back to in-person sooner, if things are going smoothly and we work it out, then we should keep that on the table. No promises, but we're going to try. The only downside of that is if you're an athlete and you're in school in person, and we have an outbreak at school, you're going to miss sports games. And I don't want that for you, it's only eight weeks, we can, we can work with you and help you do well in school for eight weeks.
Six.
Six now.
Six plus playoffs.
Six plus playoffs. Yeah.
Yeah, just a couple of questions here, do we have teams to play against?
Good question. At the, we've had a couple of contests already get canceled as other school districts are pushing back the beginning of their season. But I've also gotten an email from a team saying, we want to play your hockey team, which was great, except we're already playing a game that day. So, and then the other thing got canceled, I mean, literally today was just bouncing back and forth. We've lost a couple of games here and there, and it's going to continue to happen like that. I heard a story this fall of an athletic director walking onto the field fifteen minutes before a soccer game and canceling it because they found out a positive case had occurred on, you know, or might have occurred on the team. So that kind of thing, which somehow we escaped in the fall, I think is going to be more prevalent in the winter as the overall numbers go up. So.
We don't know.
We don't know, we're playing locally in every sport that we have, with the exception of ice hockey, and the parents have promised me they're going to drive their kids to the games, so they'll be in family unit getting to and from the games. But for the most part, I think our farthest drive is like Cole Brown for basketball, and the middle school teams are even closer than that.
The other question is, let's assume for this discussion that we go, athletes go remote.
Yep.
How are other schools handling it? I am a little anxious about our team doing everything we can do. We're clean and green, if you want to call it that way, but they're not handling it that way, and one or two of theirs slipped through the cracks, if you use that metaphor. So how, how are we, are we handling that?
The only, the only sort of concrete information I have about other schools was a survey that was done through the athletic directors in the last couple of days. They said, are you shut down today? And my, our answer was yes, because it was yesterday. And so at that point, there were seven schools in the state that were shut down. My assumption is most of them weren't shut down for a couple of days, they were shut down for longer periods. So I think you've got fewer than ten percent of the state schools that are completely shut down. What are they doing? I have no idea. We had a, a team here this fall that will remain nameless, their protocols were horrifying, to the point where I sent photographs of their athletic director after the game, it was bad. I could not believe the way they handled it. But they were completely on their sideline, completely isolated, you know, not so much I can do about that. Other teams, we had come in in masks, and they played in masks, they were great. So you're really, it's really, you don't know, I mean, their schools for, they're wrestling, which makes my hair turn more gray, and I'm not even there. So it's really hard to tell exactly how they're doing it, and like, you know, a lot of schools, they're local, they're hybrid, or they're in a variety of things, so we don't know exactly what to do. So the answer is, it's a real mixed bag. I did speak to our school district attorney today, and he told me that there are a number of districts that he has worked with that are choosing to have their students be remote for athletics, particularly for the last three or four weeks of the season during playoffs, for the very reason that I've outlined a couple of times already, that they don't want the kids to miss because of an outbreak in school. So that, that was, that's kind of where some of that idea came from. There were a couple this fall, and there was one team that had to basically forfeit the state championship game, Division Two girls soccer this fall, which would have been hard, that's worst case scenario, well, a kid really getting sick is, but.
I've got a question for either you or Bob or Tom. Regarding what triggers a quarantine, someone has to actually have a positive COVID result from a test, correct? And then, anyone who's been within six feet of them for over ten minutes?
Yeah, if you read the reopening plan, it clearly outlines what those, what those, and I'm saying this for the public, I know you've read it, and this, you know, but the reopening plan clearly identifies what that process is. The problem is that when you're in, in, in sports games, it's hard to tell if you've been close to someone for ten minutes or not. And the other part that's really hard, it's hard in classrooms. You think about like the art room when kids are walking around, moving and doing things, or, or even in a math classroom, it's, it's really hard. With the little kids, if, if someone in the class tests positive, we just put them all on remote for ten days, because we don't know. Right, we don't know who's been doing what, and it's, it's so contagious that you have to err on the side of caution, and in a public school, being six feet away from someone for ten minutes or more is highly likely at any given time in the day, and especially, no, no offense to our students, but you know, high school students tend to kind of just be close to one another and talking and just joking around, and it's natural, and it, it's fine. I mean, my teenage boy is that way, they just wrestles with his brother, they're just joking around, they don't realize how close they are to each other. If you observe people in a normal context, they, they just get excited, they're happy to see each other. So it's really hard to, to, I mean, our team has done a phenomenal job of contact tracing. The, the Department of Health and Human Services said they could not believe the speed and accuracy with which they identified the people who needed to quarantine in any given situation, it's amazing. And Brian, if you'd like to speak to that, you're certainly welcome to.
No, I think you summed it up well, I mean, it's, it's, it's a process. We've, we've done it a number of times now, so we've kind of figured out what it needs to look like. We know what our, how it works with our school, and, you know, we're looking at the buses and lunch, well, not so much lunch because they're six feet apart, definitely the classes where they're sitting, athletics, sports, all those other things come into play. But, you know, if we get a, a COVID positive case in the school, it's not unrealistic to suggest that we could be having between twenty and thirty kids having to quarantine as a result. And just think about it, even if, you know, the kids take eight classes, and when, where they're sitting, there's at least going to be five people sitting within six feet of them in that particular class, and you do five times eight, you're already at forty people right there. So, but, you know, it's, it's just, it's the nature of the job right now, and we do it, we try to do it quickly and efficiently, and we're trying to work hard to keep the schools open and keep the teams playing, and all those other things that we can do until we can get back to normal.
I would like to add that the, the current protocols that I've put in place that I believe we should use are within the individual teams that are practiced together, and that's something we've talked about. You know, keeping varsity and JV basketball apart, either physically or time-wise. If we have a test on, I'll go back to the squash team again, because we know they spend a lot of time together. The whole team is going to be considered a close contact. Because it's really going to be extremely difficult to differentiate between the kids who were and were not together at any one particular time, unless they've taken real measures over a, over that entire period of time, which is usually sometimes two or three days worth of practice, where they were separating those kids. We've gotten, some kids have, you know, gotten off the hook on the quarantine because they just missed a single day of practice, and that was the magic day where the kid was, where we had the concern. We had three or four of those in the, in the first round that we did right before break.
So, um, the clock is telling us, we have to postpone the rest of this, we're to attend to item seven on the agenda, which is a series of donations, then we'll come back to it. We're sorry, we can't skip and leave that and do it later, but when you have an agenda and it's published, you have to skip to it as closely as you can. But we'll get back to Bob's presentation. But we'll get back to Bob's presentation and further discussion and everybody will have a chance to comment.
And hopefully this next part won't take long, so we'll try to keep, keep you moving.
Yeah, we'll be quick.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, so this is item seven. Uh, Matt, you want to kick it off?
Yeah, so, um, under RSA 919820B, the district for any money over $5,000 has to have a public hearing for receiving that, um, that grant. And the first one is a, um, is a COVID preparedness grant where we received $309,949 um, for teacher training, um, laptops, uh, Chromebooks and a few other items. Um, and this is in addition to another 260,000 that we received previously. Um, let's see, 260, oh nine. Uh, so we've received $569,000 towards COVID preparedness.
Move to accept.
So you need a motion to accept this?
Yes.
So moved.
Second. Okay, uh, any questions or discussion?
We'd also need to allow for any public comment because it's a public hearing.
Okay. Do you want to do them by each or after, at the end?
I would ask Matt about the procedure.
I think you would have to do it by each. So just have the public hearing. If no one gets up, close it, vote on it, move on to the next one. Because really the athletic thing is more important.
So does anybody in the public want to speak to this donation of 309,949? From the New Hampshire Department of Education? Okay. Is there any word discussion?
Let me say one quick thing. I just wanted to thank Matt Angel and our administrators for working so hard to catalog all the items in time that was purchased so that we received this money. This was not easy and it was really, really well done. Thank you.
Okay, so we got a roll call vote starting with Tammy to approve or to accept this donation?
Yes.
Jamie?
Oh, yes.
Don?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And yes for myself. Okay.
Okay, the next one is a $10,000 grant for, um, BioMade Industry Career Ambitions and Skills. And it looks like just a program, it's, it's like a science program.
We have a staff member here to speak to it.
Yeah, so I'm going to introduce Devin Helnke. He's a science teacher here at the high school and Devin spearheaded a, uh, grant application for this. So he'll tell you about this and what he sees it for.
Thanks. Um, I will try to be as brief as possible. Um, so basically, um, the BioMade Grant, um, exists. This particular fund was made available for, um, schools to start initiatives to better prepare students for careers in the biomaterials industry. Um, and I actually didn't know this when I, um, started it, but, um, New Hampshire is actually one of the, um, kind of hubs for the industry. So that includes things like tissue engineering, um, uh, real cutting edge like biotechnology applications, um, right in Manchester. So, um, the money will be used for, um, basically we have a team of teachers, um, that are going to be creating a career awareness, uh, multimedia presentation in order to get students interested and make them aware, um, that this is an industry that's an option available to them in the state of New Hampshire. Um, and also develop a series of extended learning opportunities for both high school students and middle school students across the state um, to just get them more interested and engaged in this emerging industry. Um, so I'm really excited about the opportunity and looking forward to, um, how it shapes up this year.
Thank you for writing the grant.
Question?
Yeah.
Do you have any examples of how this would actually be used in the classroom?
Yes, so, um, so this year, um, we are developing these extended learning opportunities. And we have it, we have five teachers across the state at the middle school level and five teachers across the state at the high school level. Um, and, um, each teacher, um, will have at least one student who will complete one of the extended learning opportunities this year um, before, um, for June. So, um, they will, a- after this year, all these materials are going to be made, um, public for any school. It's sort of adopt these, these ELOs. Um, and the other cool thing about the program is that we actually have, um, we're going to be able to pair up students with industry mentors, um, or graduate students, um, that are knowledgeable in those particular industries, um, as well.
But can I get a, a motion to accept this grant?
Move to accept.
Okay, uh, any additional discussion by the board? Public, yeah, public comment? Okay, um, so roll call vote to accept. Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Don?
Yeah.
Pete?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yes for myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Devin.
Back to athletics. We can, we can do the other grants after the athletics.
Oh, we can?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, great.
Public hearings.
Thank you.
There will be one more public hearing at the next board meeting for another DOE grant.
Um, so Bob, can you come back to the podium?
High fiving Devin.
Any other board members have any questions or comments?
I just would like, um, just for me, I know we've got one student athlete across from me and I'm seeing some young people here. And my question is, what do they think of the remote learning for the athletes? Do they think the other team members will take advantage of that? And I'm going to use the word be true to it, meaning they'll, they'll do what they're supposed to do. So I would, I'd love to hear actually from the ones who are, who are affected by that. Got to be careful.
Well, also, because someone's, if someone's at home learning remotely and they're playing athletics, that doesn't percrute, that we can't dictate their behavior outside of.
No, no, I understand. I, I'd just like to know their feeling about this and.
Right, but I think that's something for people to be aware of too.
Yeah, but I, I mean, they're the ones that are going to do it. So I, you know, parents are going to say yes, no, whatever, but they're not the ones that are going to be learning at home and trying to play sports.
Right. Okay, so, uh, public comment then, if you want to come forward, if you could, for, to help our secretary out, because this is all just part of the minutes, if you could, uh, say your name and spell it and say which town you're from.
Uh, Jamie Bazanson, Newton, New Hampshire. Um, in all fairness, I also coach the, uh, girls reserve team.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm, I'm a business owner, possessor in New Hampshire. I have, uh, 52 grown adults in my building every day. Um, I was glad to hear Bob and Tom kind of expand upon the reasons why this is happening. I don't believe the email was kind of expressed what you guys expressed tonight and I do thank you for that. So I'm not here to speak on whether remote is the way to go or whether full is, is the way to go. I came here to kind of defend the athletes that I've been seeing. Um, I, I make the point of the 52 adults because we have protocols very similar to what you guys have instilled in the athletic program. I spend the majority of my day chasing grown adults around for the last nine months, making sure they follow the rules. And they don't, and they don't. Um, Mr. Dawson, I had a conversation, uh, the first day of tryouts, actually, about a girl who, her mask wasn't, it was, you know, it was a little low, little low rise. Um, and I said to myself, what did I sign up for? I do it all day for $8. I'm going to do it here at, at basketball. But last time I ever hadn't talked to a girl about the mask. And I, I was, I'm, I was blown away, right? So for three weeks after that, you know, through skills and through, through tryouts, never had to talk to a single person about the mask. So I'm here to defend them, you know, the, the email came across like it was athletics were causing the cases. I'm glad you guys clarified that because it really was not clear.
Yep.
Um, I came here to defend that athletes had COVID. I'm not sure that athletics caused that. Um, I'm here to defend them and say, you know, what a great group of, uh, I can only speak to the girls. What a great group of girls, um, you guys have, and they follow the rules to a T. And, um, I think, you know, I think whatever protocols you put in front of them, they're going to do a great job and you guys don't have to worry about it. So I commend them. And again, you guys took a little, you know, took a little luster off my argument because you, you made it for me before that. But I do appreciate that. That email was, it was tough and it's, it's tough to summarize. I understand this whole thing is tough. Um, but you know, I did want to come here and defend them because I've been so pleasantly surprised to be able to come after work of, you know, watching people walk around without masks or without washing their hands and they do a great job. So I just want to make sure you guys were, were clear on that. All right, thank you.
And again, if you could spell your name.
I'm Hannah Douglas, uh, H A N N A H, D O U D L S.
And if you hit that microphone, it's going to be really loud. Yeah, I just, just wanted you to know that's where that was coming from.
I understand, um, we're all aware that the most important part of this is the safety and health of each player. Um, whether it's on and off the court, track, ice rink, each student is doing their part to make sure that they're not only keeping themselves healthy, but others around them too. Um, when agreeing to play the season as students and parents, we all acknowledge the risks that came with it. Um, but those are risks that we all are willing to take. Um, when it comes down to it, nobody wants this season more than the athletes themselves, meaning none of us would ever jeopardize that. Um, it has now been brought to the attention of all student athletes. So we might be obligated to make a choice of choosing to do remote learning with the privilege of getting to play our winter sport, or we may remain in-person learning, with the exception of not being able to play. The majority of the players on each team this winter are juniors and seniors, meaning that this year academically is one of the most important ones for our future. I can speak for myself and many others, that online learning is a struggle and it can take a toll on not only our grades, but our mental health. The mental health of students is utmost important in a time like this, which is why it's imperative that students don't go a season without playing this sport. As students, we need that in-person learning experience more than anything in a time like this, but we also need those extracurricular activities that are part of being a student in their high school years. With each of our seasons barely up and running, we need and want that chance to prove that we can pull this off. And I know that you'd asked, um, how our feeling is on, um, the alternative. And although it's not ideal, if it did come down to that, I can speak for myself and a lot of us that, um, it's a risk that, or choice that we'd be good with making.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah, it's okay.
Um, first of all, thank you for your very well-written statement and for being here. Um, so if, if, if it was between not having sports, I just want to make sure I understood your last point. If it's between not having sports and being remote, you'd rather have that sports and be remote?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I understand and, and, and yes, I, I just want you to hear from me as the leader of the schools that none of us think that remote learning replaces your regular school day. It's hard for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, hi, I'm Andrew Pugh, A N D R W P U G H. I'm a junior. Uh, basketball is like really important to us. Most of us work like all year long and work hard to get better for the season. Uh, we have some seniors on the boys team that it would be really sad to like miss their senior year because it's an important part of the high school basketball career. Um, but we understand that there's going to be some rules and regulations that we need to follow. And I think I can speak for, uh, my team in saying that we would accept those because we realize that if you give us a chance to play, it'd be a privilege and we don't want to prove you guys wrong. So I think if we do have a season, we'll, we'll be willing to do whatever we can to keep it. Thank you.
I'm Elie Morris, E L I M O R R I S. Um, so this was also written before we knew that online would be an option. And obviously it wouldn't be our like first pick, but if it means we can have a season with our friends for their last year, we want it. And as a junior captain of the girls basketball team, a huge point like that I thought about was our parents, like they, if we are okay with like the risk we're putting ourselves at and like, if it's not putting anyone else at risk at us coming to school, I think like with the board and everything, we should be allowed to play. I mean, obviously it's not just about us, but I think that should also be taken into account. And then we also fully understand you guys are concerned for our health. Everyone's, that's the main concern. That's, we want everyone to be healthy, but at the same time, our team is putting ourselves at risk and we're willing to do that for our season. We're wearing masks also at all times and we're wearing them to and from games. Like we'd be wearing them on the bus. We'd be, we always wear them in practice, even also another thing is Mr. Gray put in so much time. Like when we had to have our regulations and everything and we couldn't have contact practices, he spent hours on hours planning out different trails. So we would be, be social distancing away from each other. And so we could still manage to have a season. We've been doing Zoom calls. We did one today, just trying to like keep our program running. We've been there the whole summer when we couldn't have a season, waiting to get up to this moment. And I just like want to show that point of view. And also we understand we can't control everyone's actions, but during our practices, we've had so far, we've been following every regulation. And, uh, yes, yeah, he spent hours like basically we've, we've also been following every single rule. Like he's big on rules and that's honestly a good thing. Like we want to have that right now. We want to make sure everyone's staying as safe as possible. And also we've been social distancing outside of school. We put so much effort into having a season. We've been able to limit cases within our teams for so long and they're minimal. Um, this is not just returning to the girls basketball program. I know all of our winter teams are not going to let the season go down, but I, we just want to show our point of view because people really don't know what it's like if you're not a player or a coach. We're the ones like going through, like playing with masks, like running around with it. Like we understand too, and we want to like show that we do, not just come out from our side or like think it's just about us personally. Like we are understanding like everyone's side also. And then I know physical health is obviously the biggest concern, but like we have to also take into consideration our mental health as well. Cause even if it's not made out to be super important, it is, and like, it's just been brought up over the recent years. But like, that's also like so important to every single person. And if we're doing all the precautions and following every single rule, in our minds, we just feel our point of view like before, when we just found out, like when we got the emails before, like we didn't know, we thought, oh, we might not have a season. Like that's why we want to defend ourselves. And I think like we really want to show our school and our district that we can overcome challenges even with COVID. And I think that this would be a huge example of how we can do that. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ella Cotter, E L L A, C O T T E R. Um, I'm a senior at Sanborn this year and I'm also the captain of the girls varsity team. Um, first time, I'm just going to speak for Jake Tedford. Um, so his issue on the matter was what kind of precedent does quitting on the first sign of adversity step for students of Sanborn? We made a commitment to making this season happen and we should have expected this sort of things to happen. We can't just drop the entire season because of incidents unrelated to sports itself. It's unfair and frankly not right.
I said that before the, you guys clarify.
Yeah. I, I probably should.
It's okay, Jake. It's, we're happy to hear from you. They're kind of quiet, so we, you know, we, we like to hear from you. Just a point of order. No. You, you are more than. Yes. Able to get up and public comment on your own whenever you want. Yeah. If you're public comment, you're more than able to do that. All right. Yep. Thanks, Jamie. That's a really good point.
Okay, so now for what I have to say on the matter. Um, as we all know, this last year has been incredibly inconsistent and uncertain for everyone. Normalcy has been very scarce. As student athletes, sports have been the only thing that have kept us afloat. With school going back and forth from in-person and remote learning, keep a schedule or routine is hard to do. Since we first went online, the mental health of students in our school and across the nation have been hit hard, for athletes especially. Our seasons mean so much to us and is the only way we can protect some kind of normalcy in our lives. We understand that this decision is based on health risks and we would love to have a conversation with whomever necessary, whether it be you, the school board, Mr. Dawson, Mr. Ambrose, or anyone else, to come up with additional health precautions to follow along with those that have already been put in place and are being followed. As a team, we have already come up with some ideas such as no huddling during practices. Those of us who can drive are willing to drive to our away games in order to keep more space between those who are taking the bus. Hand sanitizing before and after practices slash games and committed to be constantly wearing a mask. Um, after receiving Mr. Dawson's email today about his proposal, we have actually already come up with certain ways to help keep us, um, up to date on our schoolwork, such as study sessions together, group face times, whatever we need to do, um, to make sure that we're passing school. Um, before each practice, I'll. Before each practice, already we fill out our health check, have our temperatures taken, and masks are required at all times. As a school board, we want you to be able to trust the players and coaches to do the right thing to keep everyone safe. We are here now to show our dedication to do anything necessary to keep our season. Many other schools still have their winter programs running, including basketball, which have been running safely for some. Each person who has signed up for a winter sport is aware of the risks that come along with playing. Each person's parents are also aware of the risks and they have still agreed to let us play. Mr. Gray is one of the most committed coaches at Sanborn, as you all may know. He hears for each and one of us and our safety. He has said that time and time again, he will put us above our season every single time and he will make any decision necessary to do so. Again, we understand that this comes down to health risks, but as said before, we are committed to our team and therefore willing to do any extra health precautions on the court, especially off the court and in school. Maddie, Ellen, Grace and I have been playing on a basketball team together since the fourth grade. They're all here today too. This is our senior season and possibly the last season for some of us to play basketball on a team. This season is the last one we have to play with each other and to make strides to bringing home a championship win, which we have a very high possibility of doing so. This season, our season, means everything to us. Our team has come here today to support us and our season, as well as representatives from other sports. We are imploring you here today to hear us and take what we have said today into con- consideration before you decide anything. Thank you.
So I, I just want to ask before we, we have the board deliberate and make this decision, what I'm hearing from you, you can just give me like a thumbs up, you know? What I'm hearing from you is you don't love the idea of being remote, but you're willing to accept that because you want your basketball season. Can you give us a thumbs up as a group? Okay, so, but do you also agree? Can I get a thumbs up that, you know, Mr. Dawson can take a look at this in a few weeks and see what the cases are looking like? I also, is that, is that cool too? Like we check back in and see how things are going? I just don't want to see y'all work this hard and lose the end of the season if you have a chance at the championship too. So I want you to really think about that. You may choose to stay remote just because it's, it's good, protects you to have your season, right? The last thing I wanted to say is wow, you guys are awesome. Like I, you, you did a great job. Totally professional. You did better than some adults I've worked with. It was great. So I just wanted to thank you for being so professional and mature. And it really, it really, it warms my heart to see our students speaking so articulately. And it's really scary to get up there and speak to the superintendent in the school board. I mean, I'm not scary, it's something. But I just want you all to know that like I'm, I'm really happy and impressed. So overall fantastic job. And then I think at this point, Mr.
No, I just want to add one more thing. They're not giving you lip service either. They practice what they preach. When they tell you this is how they're going to be, they're nothing but that. And, and they represent a much larger group of students that since we've started back in person, I have been incredibly impressed with how all of our students have handled themselves with regards to following whatever rules and procedures we put in place to keep everybody safe because they know the drill. When we don't, we start having cases, we start quarantining, we go back to remote. Nobody wants that. They're willing to jump through pretty much any hoops we put in front of them. They just want that opportunity.
Well, my favorite idea, Mr. Stack, that the students brought up, which I hadn't thought of is that if the team creates a cohort to support each other with remote learning, you still get some of that student interaction that you might get in a normal school day. I want to very strongly encourage you, should the board decide to go with the plan that's being proposed, to do that, right? Like connect, Skype, Zoom, FaceTime, whatever it is to connect and talk about school and make sure that you're, you're progressing during this, this period. That's a really good idea and it also just increases the camaraderie of your team. So great, great idea. I didn't think of that one.
Hi, Kevin Nando Pereiro. We're going to use all the letters in the alphabet to do this. K E V I N, M E R R Y hyphen C A R R E I R O.
I'll send it to you first.
On video.
Again, yeah, there you go. Yeah, we're the MCs. Right?
Yeah.
I came up here with like, you know, you saw my email. That was a short one. I sucked that down four or five times before I sent it to you guys. I commend all of you for what you do. I, I don't do what you do. I don't want anything to do with what you do. I trust in what you people do for us. It takes a lot of fortitude to do what you guys do every day and make those hard decisions in the benefit of all these kids that we're up here advocating for. With that being said, you know, I threw it out there. Do make the right call, do the right thing. Not even have seen the email that we come up before about the possibility of doing remote learning. So again, I commend all of you for figuring out a way to let these kids have some kind of a season. Let them have the seniors, let them have some kind of a last year where they can be together and do what they need to do. You also need to know, as, as dedicated as those kids are to what they want to do, all of their parents are firmly behind what they're trying to do. We will support them. We will give them what they need. We will help enforce what they're doing. There's the gentleman that was up here earlier. I made a joke, adult daycare service. That's what I do for a living. I literally babysit grown men all day long, men and women. And what I comes out of my mouth nine times out of 10 is either the finger pointing or the hey, mask, 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 hard hat, mask, all day long, all day long. Young people get it. A lot of us older people are on a different side of the fence. We kind of get it. It's down by your nose a lot. It's not up on your face. These guys get that because they're sick of it. We're all sick of it, but they're really sick of it. Nobody wants to wear these things anymore. They're willing to do whatever they have to do to get whatever kind of season they can get from you guys. So again, thank you for coming up with a possible idea of a way to make this work. And thank you to all you students that have shown up today and spoken. You guys, I mean, I couldn't. So all of you again, take what they're saying to heart, you know, and do what you gotta do. And good luck.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zach Soma, Z A C K S O M A. I just wanted to speak on behalf of the ice hockey team and say that we are following a lot of protocols and we're taking this really seriously. And we're making sure that when we're at practice, we've only had two practices so far, but when we're at practice, we're making sure that we're doing the right thing. We're staying safe. We're staying apart as much as we can and we're limiting contact between people so that, to make sure that it's not spreading. And on behalf of, I think, the whole ice hockey team, we just want to have a season, no matter what it takes. Like we're willing to do pretty much anything, but we would prefer if we could stay in school because learning is the first priority. And there are a lot of kids who, not even just in ice hockey, but in sports in general, who struggle with online learning and it's hard for them and their grades suffer because of it. And I think it's hard on kids to have to make the decision, do I want to play the sport that I love? Or do I want to focus on my grades and make sure that I pass? Because if we don't pass, we can't even play in these sports. So I think that aspect of it is something that you guys should consider because while the health and safety is the most important part, but we just need to make sure that these kids are like doing well in school.
Thank you. I do just want to say that, that it's important for everyone to know that we do, we have set up a significant online support program at the high school in the last five weeks, which really just took root right before the holiday break. So there are three teachers who offer services to students who need support in math, science, reading, social studies, or any course that they're working on. So in addition to their regular classroom teachers, they have access to an online help desk and they also have a, remote students have an assigned mentor that is keeping an eye on the students in addition to the guidance staff. So I just wanted to put that out there, Zach, just so that you knew that we are setting up some more support too. And we, we do recognize, again, I just, I'll say it for the public, online learning does not replace in-person school. It does not. And so I just wanted to thank you, Zach, for, for sharing what you did. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I, one. It's all set, but.
Amy.
So I just want to say, I am so sorry. I'm so sorry that we all have to be here talking about this. And I, I totally get it. My kids played athletics. My son was here at Sanborn. My daughter was for a while. She, they probably both played, I think, with some of the siblings of a lot of the students here. And I'm really sorry also for the parents. I'm just, I, I know. I know what you're giving up. I know what you're missing and I just am so sorry. I'm really impressed. I am also really impressed with the students here. Thank you for coming. I guess I also want to thank all the parents. I hate these microphones. I want to thank everyone who reached out by email and everyone who's here tonight. I want to echo Mr. Ambrose's words saying that although remote, you know, we know remote learning is not a substitute. We all discuss that pretty regularly here. Academics are really important. That's definitely our priority. So I hope this, you know, this proposal for remote learning, I hope that the students will take advantage of that. And I hope it will be very short-lived and I do support the proposal with monitoring and trying to get the kids back in school as, as, at the earliest opportunity.
So, um, so I would like to thank everyone that came tonight and spoke. I'm not going to lie, this has been weighing on me very, very heavily. So to hear you all come and say that you are willing to do what it takes to make sports happen, makes my decision a lot easier. So thank you for that. I said to the superintendent this morning, I said, is there any chance we could try something remote? And he goes, that's something that I think will be proposed. So that was great. And then my brain, I just want to give you the process here. My brain went to, okay, we're talking a hundred and something athletes potentially going remote. And then it went, if there is a correlation, which we don't know yet, between athletics and outbreaks, what could that possible impact have on our students? So I asked for a lot of numbers today and thankfully we have some really great administrators that pulled together some numbers for me. So.
They turned up the gain for you a little bit.
So.
Jean, I remember this when I want to buy new microphones. For the finance committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want everyone to know what remote learning means for our seventh through 12th graders if we had to, you know, send the school into remote. We have 800 plus students between seventh through 12th grade. We have roughly 385 students on IEPs, 504s, or require well-child checks during remote learning. That is a huge number of students that are impacted. So I just want everyone to know that I am grateful for you guys coming here tonight and saying that you are willing to do remote because now we can find out what really is happening and we can make the best decision for all of our students and our athletes. And we can move forward and have some really solid answers and hopefully get you guys back in the building and continue to keep you playing sports. So thank you all for coming tonight. I really truly appreciate all of you.
Yeah, I, I, I guess maybe I'm looking at this a little simplistically, but the way I look at this, this is an opportunity or choices. I think the prudent and safest way is probably to go to remote. But if you think about that, it's the parent that's going to decide. Is the child going to go benefit more by going into school? Fine. If they think remote is okay, they go remote. But it'll be the parent to, to decide whether or not their child plays a sport and goes remote or doesn't play the sport because the education is important for that particular child. So I think give the opportunity to let the parent be the parent and make the decision which way they want their child to go. Maybe that's simplistic, but I don't know.
I think the, the only problem with that, Pete, and I'll just, that was discussed, choice. The problem is that if, if, if there's an outbreak at a sports facility and 10 students are in person, it will shut down the whole high school.
But we're, we're talking about maybe, could be, might be. We're going to have a system in place with Mr. Dawson to keep his eye on that. Let the parent be the parent and make, let them decide. But I do think remote is the most prudent way to go about it.
It's really hard.
As the parent, as the parent, you can use that as the carrot to make sure you're studying.
Schoolwork gets done, right?
I think she's studying.
I'll get more comments, but unless you're going to Larry yet.
Larry, do you have anything?
I got my, the kids were great with their comments. They made my choice very easy.
Didn't know if you could hear him.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you.
I got some comments. I'll take them in the order of my notes.
Oh, he's got this coming through or not?
It's only taking about two or three hours. Don't worry. I'll, I'll start with, with Mr. Dawson. I got up and I was trying to get a better understanding of the numbers because I thought I was looking at 11 of 25, 44% linear play. This is impacting directly and I appreciate the clarifications that it isn't linear and there's all kinds of different trajectories to this. So that, that helps me get a better idea of it. Also, the fact that we're talking about six weeks in a playoff season puts some time fencing around this. So it isn't the whole rest of the year. That was helpful for me to know that piece. I, I was not familiar with that. Tom, your comments regarding what other districts are doing in the, going remote to protect the student athletes from the potential of, of spread in the school to prevent them from playing. I thought that was good. So. from the potential of spread in the school to prevent them from playing. I thought that was good. So the more important items, I think, were some of the comments that happened and two people mentioned something. I just want to make a clarifying statement on Mr. Bazanson and Ms. Morris both made the statement that they were standing up in defense of the athletes. And personally, I don't think the athletes have anything in need of defense. They're, they're not guilty of anything. They haven't done anything. They're not responsible for anything of what's been happening in COVID. They have been caught like everybody else has been caught. They get different situations and some of them have gotten COVID and that's bad enough that there should be no sense of, we need defense for their behavior. So I just want to make that clear. And then the, the comments that were made, I thought were all very well said and people are willing to do the the remote. They don't like it. My big question coming in and I answered, I don't know, a couple dozen emails today was my primary concern is keeping kids in school. I won't put at risk the entire student body for a subset of it in my mind. But hearing the people, you know, talk about what they're willing to do, I mean, I don't want to shut down sports. And given what they're willing to do, then I'm willing to commit that outside of some type of extraordinary event, because I'll never say never, that I would be committed based upon their commitments to make sure that we don't close down the season. That we find a way working through this remote back and forth to make that be able to happen. So anyways, my long-winded dissertation, but I did want to get those points out. Thank you.
All right. So can I get a motion to approve the administration of Mr. Dawson's winter athletics proposal?
I'd make a motion to approve the proposal with a bi-weekly checkpoint, just to see where we are and whether we can get everybody back in a safe manner for today in-person learning. To go remote per the request, but have a bi-weekly checkpoint and see what is the data telling us and can we get back in to everybody being in person?
Or the students that choose to too, because I think students were kind of nodding, saying, whoa, I hadn't thought of the fact that
That's correct. I agree.
being in school might mess up my season. Do you know what? I want you guys to know that you're going to have a, we're not going to make you come back in person. I just want to be clear about that, that you, you have that choice. And if you make that choice, I don't want to, for the students to feel locked in. We've asked people to make the choice until April 1st. For our student athletes, we're not asking them to make the choice till April 1st. We're asking them to make a choice through this season in six and seven weeks. Okay? Just didn't want you to feel locked in one way or the other. We want to support you.
Second, Jamie's motion.
Further discussion? All right. Larry?
Yes.
Dawn? Jamie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
And yes for me.
Okay. I had a feeling you were going there and I'm happy about that. I'll see you in two weeks. Hopefully with good news. I should have brought my glasses over. I was just talking to Brian so that I know people are listening out there. I believe we should let kids practice the next three days, Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then if they, I really need your decision by Monday on what you're going to do. So if a kid shows up tomorrow, it's not like you're locked into going remote and being here. So that's okay. I want to clarify, there was some buzz in the community that we were talking about it like kids who were in gymnastics and that was going to apply. And I'm like, no, no, this is just kids in high school or middle school sports.
This is really only basketball and hockey from seven to 12.
Yeah, I'm giving you the uniform.
Very clear.
Or except the hockey team who doesn't return their uniforms, but that's okay. I got most of them back. And it's incredibly important that we know the information on kids that are sick and they have a close contact outside of school. People have to communicate with me or Brian or Christine DeRosa or Tom. We have to have to know. If we don't know, we're running blind and that's where we can run in right to a huge buzzsaw. So I don't know what camera's on. Please tell us.
Thank you very much, everyone. You did a fantastic job.
Two-minute break. There are probably a lot I'm going to clear out.
Sure. Yeah, good idea.
We're going to take a short five-minute recess. Thank you.
I'm going to stop, start at the the top of the agenda. With the communications reports and you got the manifest, manifesto all set, yeah. Tom nominations?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I have any nominations? I do. I have a nomination. Sorry, I left my glasses in the car because of the mask. Haley Shible, science teacher, one-year contract is the only nomination I have.
Motion to approve.
I moved second.
Second. Any discussion? We'll call a vote in favor. Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Pete?
Yep.
Larry?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes for myself.
We have one resignation. Abigail Tule, English teacher at the high school.
Okay. Motion to accept.
To accept.
And we'll call a vote. Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
I.
Yeah.
Pete? Yep.
Larry?
Yes.
Yes for myself.
So I, I think that the, my superintendent's report was kind of covered. Our, our real work over the last few weeks has been around athletics and managing the COVID situation with regard to the schools and athletics. I think that we have done some really, really smart things as a district. So I wanted to thank the board. A lot of people don't understand that, that our, our board was, has been very, very supportive of our teachers in the sense that giving them those two days off at the beginning of the break made a really big difference. It allowed people to quarantine prior to traveling to visit with family that may be compromised or elderly or in a high-risk group. And so a lot of staff members have reported that they did take advantage of that extra two days off, quarantined carefully before visiting family and it made a big difference. So I just wanted to say thank you to the board for doing that for our staff. The second piece that's been happening is obviously we had a a, a pretty concerning situation right before the holiday break where a number of teachers had to quarantine. And my message to the community this evening is that it's not the number of COVID cases that are causing us to have problems with schools being open. It's the number of quarantines required by state and federal rule that are causing us to have trouble keeping the schools open. And that's true for all schools. We're not unique. We are currently operating with students in school full-time. Many districts have students in school two days a week, which means there's 50% less students in their buildings. And so even though we've had maybe less total school days than some districts, we've had more in-seat time because our students are in school five days a week when they are in person. So it's really important to recognize that we are doing a lot really, really right with, with through a lot of hard work, honestly, of our teachers, which I really appreciate. And then the, the, the break from Christmas to New Year's was relatively quiet. Thank goodness. I think we all just kind of slowed down a little bit. And then when we came in on Monday, everything started ramping up again because, you know, we've already got folks that are having to quarantine, even though they're remote, it doesn't affect the schools, but we've got some cases already and we, we are keeping an eye on those and we're kind of preparing for school to open on Monday. We do expect school to open on Monday for all of our in-person students. There's no, the administrators don't see any problem with staffing starting out on Monday. So just a little note to everyone at home, school's starting on Monday for those who are in person, just as planned. Really happy about that. So I think that, that a lot of the last few days have been spent dealing with the the, trying to figure out a collaborative solution or collaborative problem solving around this athletics piece. And that's really taken up a lot of my time. So, and the administrators' time. So I just wanted to thank our, our staff and administrators for all their hard work to figure out a way to give our kids a sports season and hopefully things go really smooth. And if some of them want to come back to school, they'll, they'll be welcome to do so in person. I do want to remember, remind everyone that we didn't talk about this much. If a student is a student athlete and they have an IEP and they need in-person support through their IEP, we'll be providing that for them over the next eight weeks regardless of the, we have to do that by law, but I just want to say it for the public so that people know that. If you have an IEP and you, you think you're going to need in-person supports, just contact your case manager and we'll work that out for you regardless of whether or not your child is involved in sports. That's my superintendent's report for this evening. Thank you.
I've got a thank you card from the Southern District YMCA to read to the board. Says, thank you for being an advocate for Sandborne children. I look forward to continuing our partnership supporting the SAU 17 community in 2021 and beyond. Wishing you and yours a happy and healthy holidays. Topher Bishop and the SDY MCA School Age Child Care Court, Child Care Team. I also have a communication from the New Hampshire School Board Association, which is about the delicate assembly that they're having on Saturday, January 23rd. That's going to be done remotely. We discussed this a month or so ago and decided not to send anybody. I believe that this information was all sent to us to our Gmail addresses. But if anybody wants a physical copy, I'll give this to Phyllis and you can ask her. Any reports? So I know budget, the budget committee, Matt. Since our last meeting. Policy met today and finance, I know met today.
I have my report.
Okay.
Last, from our last EISA meeting also.
From when?
From our last EISA meeting.
Okay. Does anybody else have any reports?
Nope.
All right. So let's so policies, you want to wait till next week or do you have a report?
Um, I can just give a quick little overview. We met tonight for the first time since September, you know. Under control for us and compliance. So we've been able to allow our administrators to really focus on teaching and learning through this pandemic instead of having to focus on policies because we are in pretty good shape right now. But we did talk about one policy tonight, JLCA. Mr. Dawson asked us for a modification to the policy. That we would, you know, we thought it was a good idea and we will bring it to the board at our next meeting for your review and and I'm going to meet with Tom in a week and we are going to come up with a schedule for the policies that we're going to start working on at our next meeting.
Do, I would thank you for the, what accolade there for, but I will throw, you know, Dr. Brown.
Yes. Oh, yes. And Dr. Brown, absolutely.
She did most of the heavy lifting, I think.
And so I wanted everybody to know that you've done a great job and I appreciate all the hard work you did. Brown did. Larry was also on it, you know, so it was a good team effort over the past three years to make it.
Okay. So Excellence in Student Achievement Committee met on December 16th. That was a big meeting. We had, we talked about a lot of good information. In attendance was myself, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Dutton. We had quite a list. I'm just going to, Mr. Ambrose, Dr. Haines, Mr. Stack, Mr. Kurzenowski, Mr. Malilla from the high school, those three were, Principal Snyder from the Baky School, Principal McCloskey from the Memorial School, Principal DeRosa from the middle school, Ms. Conant, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Denell. Dr. Haines reported on the Alma rollout. Progress reports have been distributed at the elementary level and report cards will be going out shortly. That was actually as of the 16th, I think they went out right before, I think they're supposed to go out right before the, the Christmas break. Teachers reviewed the procedure for accessing the progress reports during parent conferences and they will continue to provide support and confirm that parents are able to access their students' information. Dr. Haines acknowledged the tremendous assistance of Ms. Conant and Ms. Denell through the, throughout the implementation process. Dr. Haines presented a proposal for the assessment data to be included in the annual report. Some assessment data that would be, would typically be included is not available this year, such as the NHSAS student statewide assessment, which was suspended. The available data will include the Fontes and Pennell, NWEA, PSAT, and SAT test results along with attendance information and post-secondary school retention rates. She, it will also be including a narrative of how instruction shifted during the pandemic for the historical record because the annual report is a historical document. As part of the ongoing effort to assess math instruction, the committee had requested a report on the number of minutes students receive in math instruction. So Mr. Snyder reported that pre-K has 30 to 45 minutes of math concepts and grades K through three have 60 minutes of math instruction every school day. Mr. McCloskey reported that currently under tier two, grades four through six receive 35 to 45 minutes per day with an additional 30 minutes of math-directed win periods. Win stands for what I need. Those are separate school periods where students receive more targeted instruction for what they need. Those are three times each week. In a regular tier one school year, grades four through six students would receive 45 to 55 minutes with 35 minutes for win four times each week. Mrs. DeRosa reported that grades seven through eight received 90 minutes of math every other day for a total of 270 minutes each week. Mr. Stack reported that grade nine through, grades nine through 12 students are required to complete three math credits plus one math experience before graduation. A math credit class offers 60 minutes of math instruction every other school day for a total of 120 hours of instruction. He noted that under tier two, students may receive less than 120 hours. The committee also had a lengthy discussion regarding the high school's efforts to review and make recommendations for revisions to the board's policies on graduation requirements and high school program of study, studies and to the schedules in the high school. The objective of these revisions are to achieve more balanced class sizes to improve instruction by increasing instructional time in English Language Arts, ELA and Math, and revisit the requirements for the diploma with distinction in order to promote increased rigor. Mr. Stack proposed forming an ad hoc committee to work on these goals beginning in January 2021 with the target date of January 2022 to finalize the program of studies for the 22, 23 school year. The committee will be comprised of a variety of stakeholders, including, including students, parents, and other community members working with administrators and staff and will provide regular updates and recommendations for revisions. In it, whoops. In addition, as an interim step, because that work will not really be bear fruit for a couple of years. So as an interim step to increase the focus on ELA and Math, scheduling changes will be made for grades nine and 10 next year to raise the seat time from the current 120 hours to 180 hours for those courses. Our next meeting is on February 10th at 4:30.
Okay. Facilities met on December 16th. It was a Wednesday. The meeting was called at 3:30 PM. All members were present. The committee reviewed the revolving funds balances as of November 30th, 2020. The balances were as follows. Special Education Fund, $241,164.62. Capital Improvement Fund, $223,027.65. An anticipated Education Expense Fund, $150,193.44. And the facilities, facilities use fund, which increased by $11,666.67, which is the monthly rent of the middle school for a fund total of $182,378.81. Total of the four funds is $796,773.52, as of a month ago. That is a net increase over this time last year of $183,628.72. So this increase is made up of the two reserve fund warrant articles approved by the voters last year plus the middle school rent and the interest on the accounts. The committee reviewed several proposals presented by business administrator Matt Angel for capital improvements at the high school to be added onto the CIP plan. These included auditorium upgrades. These included auditorium upgrades such as new lighting and audio controls along with replacing wireless mics and other equipment and stage furnishings, along with a discussion of the intent to develop an auditorium rental program to offset some of the costs. We also considered CIP proposals for resurfacing the athletic running track and a solar project at the high school. The next facilities meeting will be held on January 20th, 2020 at 3:30 PM. Please consult the SAU17.net website for scheduling and accessible location details. Tammy, do you want to do Finance or?
First, I'd just say Tammy went through all the, uh, EISAs. Uh, there was so much that was covered there. I had some follow-ups. Uh, and I just wanted people to know that I got assigned a, a significant volume of homework for the holidays. Uh, and, and was able to at least get the first reading in of the 210 pages. And a little bit more, uh, effort is still needed. But I did appreciate that. It was a, a good follow-up and good information. So, uh, thank you to the, uh, the staff that assisted me there. Um, Finance Committee met tonight. I don't have a formal write-up, but I got my little black book. So, there was three budget adjustments that I need to report out per the policy to the board. Let me just pull that up. There were three. Three, yeah, excuse me. Um, so, one of them was to move, um, funds from an other professional services speech from the middle school to Bakers, uh, for $45,000. Uh, this is a special ed fund, staying in special ed, just where it's being designated by school. Uh, there was a 50,000, uh, that was, uh, decreasing out of tuition out-of-state special ed and moving to uh, tuition non-public special ed, uh, and that was associated with an EIP that needs to be funded. So, those dollars are moved within special ed. And the third one was, there was an adjustment where money was moved from, uh, contracted consultant, uh, summer pre-K, uh, tuition out-of-state summer, tuition non-public summer, and tuition out-of-state special ed, and moved into PTOT services for $44,629.92. Those were moved from one, uh, position to the other. And if the board has, as soon as I'm wrapped up and the board has questions, they can, we can just talk with, with Matt about those details. Um, so those were the budget adjustments that we went through today. We also looked at the, uh, reserve, the revolving trust funds, but we don't have an update for December, so same numbers that Jim just reviewed. Uh, but we did point out that in addition to that 796,000, roughly 797,000 in those reserve funds, there's still in the withheld funds, 515,000 that we withheld at the end of last year, and there's 370,000 in, um, unexpected revenue that came in from money coming back from, uh, health insurance because there was a credit that came back from health insurance. When you add those three together, it's 1.68 million, uh, dollars in terms of monies that were either held or in reserve or came in that were unexpected from a revenue perspective, um, that are out there. So, uh, that's, that's a significant, uh, change from where we had before. Uh, Matt also pointed out that the medic.
Can I just say one thing? That's code language for we can re, afford new microphones for the school board. Did anyone hear that right in this?
Sorry, this didn't come through at all. Yeah, I want the Bob Barker style ones that plant right on and they come up and you just.
I rehearsed, Jordan.
Oh, oh, yeah, I got them all queued up, buddy.
Your timing was great.
And so, Matt has also been pointing out, we've been talking about Medicaid a lot and, and our Medicaid numbers went down significantly over the, the, the past year or so because of, um, changes to the way the Medicaid is, uh, is managed and the kind of receipts that you have to do. So, the, uh, the month of January brought in, uh, $45,000, uh, excuse me, $54,000 uh, in Medicaid, uh, year-to-date December, um, was 18,000 or 15,874. So, more than three times already in January from, uh, from doing it. So, the staff seems to have really locked into this new, uh, rubric that exists and, uh, and are finding ways to get that money freed back up for us. So, again, hats off to, to the folks doing that. We talked about the, uh, the COVID grant money earlier. Um, but there was 260,000 that came in from the CARES Act from reshuffling. And then the donation that we just got was another 309,000. Um, so a lot of activity going on in the midst of everything going on with COVID and the craziness of, of here and there and I'm still trying to figure out the reorganization and who's out on, uh, quarantine. We've done some, uh, good focus on what are we doing on the dollars and cents to continue to be able to fund what's happening. And, uh, so, uh, very much appreciated there. I guess that the, uh, we went through a number of, uh, manifest questions that were out there that Matt provided answers to and they're in the documentation that's out there. Oh, the other thing is, uh, the fund information is not available online. So, uh, in terms of transparency, people can get the information on, the fund information on the spending, healthcare, spending non-healthcare and revenues are available online. And Matt stepped through the video as to how to access it, showing it on screen. So, people can get it, SAU 17, um, and then it was in here somewhere. District information, thank you very much. I was gonna find that eventually, but you're much better at that. Um, and then it's, uh, spending.
Or monthly financial reports.
Monthly financial reports, thank you.
For the folks in the public, if you want to access those, just email Matt or Phyllis and they'll send you the link. Because I don't know if I can find you right now. But it isn't hard to find, but.
If you watch the video, towards the end of the video, you can, uh.
It's on the video too.
Yeah, it's Matt steps through it. So, that kind of wraps it up. I'll get this written up, uh, going, uh, in, in the future, but that was a meeting today. And, uh, thank you all for participating.
I'd just like to say briefly, um, thank you to three people or, uh, uh, you know, Matt has done a lot of work to write these grants and to get us this money. He is, he, he, you know, the majority of the, the, the funds have come from Matt's hard work, but I do want to acknowledge that Patty has worked, Dr. Haines has worked really hard on making sure that everything was tight from a curriculum and technology perspective and, and getting everything that she could to, Matt, to make sure that we qualified for these grants and Jody Guderman as well. So, the Medicaid piece is Jody Guderman and the, the, the Special Services Department and, and other aspects. I mean, we, we really, the team is just really functioning as, I couldn't be happier with the, the, the team. So, thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Um, the Budget Committee met on December 17th. It was, uh, pretty much a planning meeting, preparing the slides and content for the public hearing. I was asked to present the default budget, so I probably, I, Matt was generously, um, sent me a kind of cut and paste, cut the slides out of Tom's budget presentation. There are four of them, four or five of them. And I will just use those. Um, thank you so much for that. That really helped me.
I did share with you a, a copy of the actual slides. You can steal from it as well if you want.
Yes, thank you.
Make sure you got that.
That's next week. I guess it's the, on the 14th. Public hearing. I have it on my calendar for the 11th, so it appears to, appears to be on the 14th.
Of all this COVID stuff, the dates, I don't know if you've noticed, but time has taken on a weird, it just feels like things are going so fast.
I got that date down, but that date is still like two months away.
Yeah.
Okay, um, this is an older news. On Friday, November 6th, uh, school member, Mr. Heath, came to the school to work with life schools, slight life skills, science class, hold the model rocket launch. Uh, the launch was the kickoff activity to introduce the, uh, Space and Astronomy Unit. Mr. Heath generously donated his time, rockets, and expertise and we sincerely appreciate it. So, thank you. Um, National Honor Society member, Daisy Schreiber raised enough money to make over 80 fleece blank, blankets to donate to local nursing homes. Both National Society and Key Club were together to make the blankets and some members were featured on WMUR, if you caught that. Um, when delivering blankets. There's also a second group of members collecting warm clothing to donate to the roots house and families in transition. They will continue collecting clothing throughout the winter months. Um, the counseling team recently met with all the freshmen to start development of their career in college readiness portfolios. The freshmen completed a career interest inventory and identified courses that will help them achieve their goals.
So, we've had, we had our first public comment. So, um, moving on to new business, back to Matt on the, uh, remaining donations.
Hey, um, and all you have to do here is just accept the, uh, these two grants. Um, the first one is from the Hampshire Charitable Foundation for $500. Essentially, this is accepting funds to hand over to the uh, Sanborn Boosters Club in, um, for their participation in the New Hampshire tackles hunger in 2019.
Have to accept them both separately?
Yeah.
I move that we accept the New Hampshire, the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation grant for $500.
Second.
Amber, Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie? Don?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
I move that we accept the Richard Jones Memorial Grant of $100.
Second.
Larry, vote?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
And myself.
You just did it backwards to play with people, didn't you?
Let's shake it up.
Make it sure we're not sleeping.
Now, you can ask a quick question about the warrant articles just to make sure that we. Uh, if I remember correctly, we have to read out loud each warrant article.
Yes.
And then vote to approve it.
Yes.
Okay.
And, but then you also have to give me whether you recommend or you don't recommend the warrant article.
Isn't that the vote?
Well, one's voting to put it on the warrant, the other one is.
Oh, to recommend it, okay. Alright, so it's two separate rounds.
That's the way I understand it.
It, it'll say recommended numbers, uh, I believe, I believe we say, I believe the school board has the numbers, you know, five to two.
That's right. And I'm hoping to do the same.
I think a change.
Yeah.
And I think the town did the same.
Yeah, the Budget Committee is hopefully, I'm gonna try to get, get them to do this tomorrow night. Um, there are a couple, um, Capital Reserve Fund warrant articles that we threw in here with the same amounts from the prior year. Um, and so if you, if you want to make changes to that, that is to be done tonight. And then so I can move on with the, um, Budget Committee. Okay?
Yeah, so you want to go through one at a time?
Sure.
Would you like to have read them?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, let's see, I have to pull them up. Okay, the first, the first warrant article is going to elect the following school district officers. School board, one member from Kingston for three years. One member from Newton for three years. Moderator, one elected for one year. Budget Committee, one member from Newton for three years. One member from Kingston for three years.
Move to put that, whatever, place that on the warrant, if, if such a genuine, genuine motion.
Article one.
And now we, yeah, is there any discussion on that?
Yeah. That one, we don't need to vote on whether we approve it or not.
You don't?
To recommend it. Well, you can't really recommend that.
Oh, yeah. No, no, you can't recommend it. You just vote on that one.
Okay, so yea or nay?
Yea or nay.
Uh, Larry?
Yes, yea.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes for me.
Okay, Article two is general acceptance of reports. Shall the reports of the school district agents, auditors, committees, or officers chosen to be accepted and placed on file? And this is just a, um, ad, there's no recommendation.
Second.
Larry?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Jamie? Yes.
And myself, yes.
Okay, so this one here, this is Article three, which is the operating budget. Shall the Sanborn Regional School District raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth in the budget posted with the warrant or is amended by vote at the first session for the purpose set forth therein totaling $35,525,942. And should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $35,527,942. The same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Sanborn Regional School District or by law or governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40 colon 13 X and XBI to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. This warrant article does not include appropriations in any other warrant article.
Uh, move to approve, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I just have a question. They estimated tax impact. There's only one, shouldn't, don't, don't we usually put both the proposed budget and the default budget, the tax impacts?
No, this is, this is for the operating budget and historically, it's just been the operating budget. I actually, um, thought about that when I, when I put this together and it did not include the default budget um, tax impact for the last couple of years. Just, just for the operating budget.
Cause it's automatic.
Yeah, cause it's just assumed that when you're voting Article three, that you're voting on the operating budget?
If you're voting, yes, it, it automatic goes to default.
Right.
I think in the old days, they used to have a default.
I thought so too.
Yeah, back, back in the old days, but now, I mean, the statute is clear. If the, if the budget doesn't pass, it has to go to default by statute, you know?
And frankly, the default budget's only $2,000 greater than the operating budget. So, it's not going to be any different in the tax rate.
However, both total amounts are on the warrant, right?
Yes.
Hey, Larry?
Yes.
Yes.
Don?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Votes one to put this on and then one to recommend, or how does that work?
That's what I would recommend. And this is to put it on.
Alright.
Yes.
Yes for me. Okay, so now we have to vote. From whether we recommend it or not. Tammy?
Need a motion?
No.
Do we need a motion or are we just voting whether to recommend or not? Oh, okay.
I would make a motion to recommend.
Can't hurt.
He did it well, I must admit.
Okay, then, yes.
Yes. Jamie?
Yes, I had already spoken on this previously, so yeah.
Yeah.
Pete? Yes.
Larry?
Yes. Jim, could you speak up? I could just barely hear you.
You can hear, can't hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay. Yeah, so we just had a motion to whether individually we approved the op, the operating budget.
Yes.
And so we're doing the vote now.
That's what I thought, but.
Okay. So, what's your vote?
My vote is yes.
Okay, just for me as well.
No, you didn't vote. Ex recommended. Recommended by school board.
Yes.
Yeah, zero opposed.
Yeah. Okay. Article four, professional staff collective bargaining agreement. Shall the Sanborn Regional School District approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement for professional staff reached between the school board and the Sanborn Regional Education Association, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits of the current staffing levels over the amount paid in the prior fiscal year. Year one, which is 2020, I'm sorry, 2021 to 2022, the amount is $459,155. Year two is two, 2022 to 2023, with the amount is $536,340. Year three, uh, 2023 to 2024, the amount is $535,804. And further to raise and appropriate the sum of $459,155 for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributed to the increase in the salaries and benefits required by the new agreement. over those of the appropriation at the current staffing levels.
Can I ask you to read the first part again? I don't want to be sampleized again, I want to make sure that the people realize this is a three-year contract. I think they do when they see the years, but I, I, I just want to get the first part of it, yeah.
Shall the Sanborn Regional School District approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement for the professional staff reached between the school board and the Sanborn Regional Education Association, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels over the amount paid in the prior fiscal year, and then it does list up the three years.
Alright, that's, I don't know if you know about sampleizing.
We know it. Well, do you want to say it for three years?
It cost me about two hundred thousand.
No, no, we know that too.
Yeah.
Okay, but should we put in there, just for clarification, that it's a three-year deal?
That's what I was trying to, trying to get at.
Well, it does have, if you look at it, it has the three years.
It does list them, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's clear to me, but.
So these are, these are warrant articles that were approved by attorneys.
Yeah.
So.
They were approved by attorneys from all the way to Supreme Court when we launched.
Yeah.
You know how those attorneys sound, Matt?
Yes, they do. That's how we earn a living.
Every year since.
Yeah.
I think we're okay. Okay. Uh, you know what we'll do, we'll approve it, we'll double check, if there's a problem, we'll let you know, but I think we're okay.
Yes.
This is the exact same format that we've used in the past.
Yes.
Okay, so first thing is, uh, motion to approve the warrant article, which I'll make.
Approve, please, put on the warrant.
Yeah.
Second.
Vote, vote to approve, Larry? Larry, vote to approve?
Yes.
Okay, Pete?
Yep.
Don?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
And yes for me. Now we have to vote individually, yea or nay?
Motion to first recommend.
Or need a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Alright. Larry, Larry, did you hear that?
Yes, yes.
Pete?
Yep.
Oh, sorry, yeah, discussion.
Discussions.
So I, I want to make a few points on this. It's a three-year deal, it's basically one and a half million dollars, and I'm a COVID, it's a time of, of economic woe in the community. I do have concerns that the community is gonna have a hard time accepting this, and that it might end up going down. I am cheap. I don't like spending money. That said, we just returned to taxpayers, two point three million dollars. We have lost a number of good teachers, we are not in alignment with local alternative employments for them. I know this frustration, because I got a lot of emails on the frustration of our kids aren't in school, teachers didn't come to school, we don't have the staffing, my kid's paying the price, I'm upset about that. I can understand those frustrations. Uh, I would just remind people also that it hasn't been an easy, um, an easy road to hold for the teachers either. Um, they've had to go through some difficulties in order to figure out how to do this also, and manage a number of different things, so notwithstanding my cheap genes, that I can thank my, my dear father for, I'm going to support this and, and vote in favor of recommending it for those reasons.
I was tracking which way we were going.
You were going to Tammy next.
Okay.
Well, can I make a suggestion? Because he had a comment, someone may have changed their vote, I know they didn't, but I would stop the vote again for a few seconds.
Well, let's see, are there any other comments first?
Yeah, there are.
Larry? Voting?
Yes. No, I have no other comments.
Oh, you have a comment?
I can barely hear you, Jim.
Okay. Um, you voted yes, correct?
I voted yes, and it's still a yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me.
I just wanted, on behalf of the teachers, I wanted to say thank you for your comments, Jamie. It means a lot. Uh, and we do need to keep our great staff, and I do appreciate the support from the school board for our teachers, thank you.
Kills me, and all that, this kind of money.
I know, I know, but yeah, thank you.
Alright, so this is Article five, administrators collective bargaining agreement. Shall the Sanborn Regional School District approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement for the administrators, reached between the school board and the Teamsters Local six thirty-three, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels over the amount paid in the prior fiscal year. There are four fiscal years listed here, I want to make sure that that's clear. Okay, the first fiscal year is two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two for twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The second fiscal year, which is two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, for forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars. The third year is two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four for forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. The fourth year is two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five for forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And further to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributed, attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those of the appropriation at the current staffing levels. Okay?
Four years and this additional amount? Over twenty-six thousand for.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can do that. Um, so, so basically what happened is the, uh, the board negotiated with the administrators, and the administrators wanted to acknowledge the difficulty that Mr. Fitzpatrick just outlined with COVID in their, their agreement, so they agreed to, they did two things. One is that this, this warrant article caps the amount of percent increase in their health insurance by, um, four percent. So their health insurance cannot increase by more than four percent in year one, and more than six percent in years two, three, and four. So they've agreed, the, the, the Teamsters have agreed to cap that, which is a good savings for us. The second thing is that the administrators in year one only took a one and a half percent raise, and they don't have steps. So it's a flat one and a half percent for them, and then in years two, three, and four, it was two point seven five with the cap on health insurance. So it's important to note that like our teachers, our administrators are kind of a little bit behind the area rates, and this at least keeps them at, and maybe even moving in a positive direction with the surrounding communities. Is that what you wanted? Okay.
Okay, uh, so I move to accept the warrant. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Larry?
Yes.
Pete?
Yep.
Don?
Yes.
Jamie?
One of ours, is this, is this to accept the warrant as is, or to recommend it?
Place it on the.
Place it, yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
And myself is yes. Okay, so now, yeah, to recommend. Now, we have a motion, we need a mo, oh, we moved to, to recommend. Second.
Second.
Okay, so, uh.
Discussion.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tammy.
Any discussion?
I'm pretty sure Jamie must have something.
I'm gonna get Tammy some cue cards, right? Red, yellow, and green.
Any discussion?
Well, yeah, I've always been a comic.
Okay.
Um, Tom, Tom mentioned what I, I would have said here also. I also point out that I, I think a four-year lock-in is actually good for the, for the district. And again, I don't, well, I guess I'll leave it at that, I won't go into those other statements. I'll get yelled at by Tom after.
Let's never stop to be sure.
Yeah. He'd be right this time.
Whoa, that's the best compliment I've gotten in a while.
Good to have some clarification. Anybody else? Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yes for myself.
Okay, Article number six, Capital Reserve Fund Unanticipated Educational Expenses. Shall the Sanborn Regional School District vote and raise and appropriate up to fifty thousand dollars to be placed in the Capital Reserve Fund Unanticipated Educational Expenses established at the two thousand nineteen annual meeting? The sum shall come from the June thirty fund balance available for transfer on July first, instead of returning the money to the community. No amount to be raised from taxation.
Looks up the warrant.
Second.
Special.
Question.
Yeah.
Um, last year, at the deliberative session, this was raised to seventy-five thousand, and it was approved by the voters, so I wonder if, why fifty thousand and not seventy-five thousand, since that was approved last year?
I, I was actually gonna ask you if you wanted to make a change tonight.
Well, I would suggest that we keep it at the fifteen and let them do it again, they, that where they have ownership. My concern is always that a higher number is more difficult to pass, but if somebody from the floor, even if it's our, my, our wives or husbands, or daughters or sons can make that motion, and let the people decide. But I think fifty thousand is easier to pass than it is seventy-five, we talked, I think, a lot about and ju, and correctly with the COVID and what have you. So, you know, let, let the people decide. Have a motion from the floor like last year.
So if we were going to amend, we would need a motion to amend.
Another discussion.
I, I just, I, I believe we're, we're misleading people when we say there's no tax impact. It's avoidance of a tax relief. I mean, there, there is a calculated, calculable tax number, it's just, I'm not, I'm going and asking you for this much more in taxes today.
Yes.
But if you vote for this, it's this much less of tax relief you would have got tomorrow.
You are absolutely correct, I have had that argument for almost twenty years now. Anytime you spend money, it has a tax impact, but unfortunately, DRA, and it's been challenged numbers of times, this is, I think, how DRA wants it done.
Pete and I went around and around about this the first, before you were on the board, Jamie, and we, we, we tried to actually put it the way that you're suggesting, and DRA wouldn't let us, so it's not, we agree with you.
And then what, what I would ask is, can I get for my purposes, and so I can use it at the deliberative, what is that number? That is actually being impacted, so that we can talk about that with the public, so if the state law prohibits me from putting valid, relevant information on a ballot, then I can make it known otherwise.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, and I think that it's gonna come out to be less than a penny, but we will, we will do that.
The rule of thumb is you take the, um, assessed value of the, make sure I'm right on this, because it's, it's confusing. I think the assessed value of the town, and it's actually called, I think, the three finger rule, uh, in, in accounting, you put your fingers over the last digits, so in Kingston, it's about eight hundred million dollars, so that means for every eight million, you spend a dollar. Am I correct? Every eight hundred thousand, it's ten cents.
Every eight hundred thousand.
And every what?
Every eight hundred thousand, you spend, spend a dollar.
A dollar, right, and then for every eighty thousand, it's a dime, and for every thousand, it's a penny. So it's pretty easy to calculate using that accounting rule, so if this is how much money?
Thousand.
It divided by the two communities of twenty-five thousand, so in Kingston, you, you, it's less than a penny.
That's why I was saying, it's about, I, it's always come out to be just about a penny, I, I knew that from before. And, and just for transparency, I, we agree with you, right? We, for the public, I hate saying that, but we agree with you.
I mean, it, it, it is, I mean, you spend money, it comes with a tax rate.
It does, it does.
So, so basically what this is, is it's money that would be otherwise used to reduce the tax rate.
Right.
Okay?
Tax doesn't increase, because it's coming from last year.
I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I'll just say briefly that the reason that I, as I understood it, and I'm not, Matt's the expert at this, but it's already been appropriated and taxed, so to put on the form that it has a tax impact, it was explained to us that that, it's already been taxed, but yes, you are correct.
You've already raised.
We've already raised it, we just haven't appropriated it.
Eleven percent of government tax is the same thing more than once.
I have no comment on that, alright.
I'd admit the government does what business does.
Alright, I can't make a motion, so I'm gonna let you guys.
Any other discussion? So, uh, Tammy, do, do you want to make a motion on this?
Did we not already moved that? Oh, uh, sure, I moved to place the Capital Reserve Article six on the ballot, on the warrant.
Oh, I meant the seventy.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm good with, oh, oh, excuse me.
Yeah.
Um, I think I agree that fifty thousand is reasonable, this, especially this year, and if the, you know, community members would like to raise it, I won't object.
I know, we do have a motion to, uh, accept.
Okay, that's what I thought, sorry, yeah.
Okay, and we have a second.
Second.
Okay, so, I, voting to accept, Larry?
Yes.
Pete?
Yep.
Don?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Yes for me. So now, I'll make a motion to recommend Article six.
Mark, Tammy.
Second. I only say it because I just, we, like, nobody else does, so.
Alright, and we'll call a vote, starting with Larry?
Yes.
Discussion?
Any discussion?
I, I just want to go by the, you know, it's, it's.
Alright.
Yes.
Yes.
Don? Tammy?
Yes.
And yes for myself.
Alright, the last one, I know this has been fun. Article seven, Capital Reserve Fund Capital Improvement and Maintenance. Shall the Sanborn Regional School District vote and ra, to raise and appropriate up to fifty thousand dollars to be placed in the capital improvement and maintenance, maintenance capital reserve fund previously established? The sum to come from June thirty fund balance available to, for transfer on July first, instead of returning the money to the community. No amount to be raised from taxation.
I still don't like it.
Anybody else want to move to accept?
I moved to accept.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Alright.
I'll just say ditto for Jamie.
Hold on.
Alright, so Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Larry?
And yes for me.
Yes for me.
To recommend. Move to recommend.
Oh, jeez.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, discussion?
I'm good.
Voting to. It's a half hour meeting.
Starting with Larry?
Yes.
Pete?
Yep.
Don?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
And yes for me.
Thank you.
He spread another one just in the front.
Well, you know, this community needs to have like thirty and forty articles.
Kingston's got a lot.
Two in our town, but not usually on the school warrant.
Okay, so the next is, uh, operating budget, MS twenty-seven.
So the, the MS twenty-seven, um, right now is in draft form, and basically what it does is it lists out, um, by function, the, um, proposed, operating budget. And really, it's, it's to be, um, sent up to the DRA, okay, for, um, to put on notice, okay? And, and really, the idea is, is to put the taxpayers on notice what the money's gonna be spent for, and this is like the official form, okay? It's just a budget document, and, um, right now, because you guys approved all those warrant articles, I can now turn to the budget committee and try to get them to approve everything as well, and then I can finalize this. At the end of the day, it gets approved by, I'm sorry, it gets signed by the budget committee. Now, the, the point, the important piece to it that I want to point out to everyone tonight is that the last page of the document is, calculates the ten percent rule. So the deliberative session, the budget can only be increased or decreased by ten percent, and that amount is three million, three hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Three million, three hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Okay? Well, no, what happens is if someone wants to increase the budget at, at the deliberative, they can only go up ten percent, or they can go down ten percent. And this is just puts guardrails, the amount that they can work with. Okay? That.
Alright, so the reopening plan. Yeah. This is, uh, I would like a motion to accept the changes as presented by Dr. Heans regarding the three areas. Um, the three areas that she sent to you in an email today are uh, um. Really, really pretty, um, pretty straight ahead. The, the first one is. Um, that our doctor updated the requirements, the school district position. Requirements, it's now attend Acorn. And for to come back, you don't need a note from your doctors, you need to be symptom-free for certain, I mean, that was all outlined in the documents that she shared with you.
Oh, I can't hear you.
Did you get an email today, Larry, from Dr. Heans?
Is this the, is this the email that?
Yeah.
Is this the protocols for something earlier?
Yeah, it's multi-colored, it's a multi-colored reopening plan.
Protocols for, oh no, that's athletics, excuse me, that can't be it. This didn't come in an email.
You guys like me to put it on the screen for you or? I can just read what it is.
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah. They're, they're very minor, but they're important. So I want people to be clear. The reason why I put these ones on, we made tweaks to the plan all along per the board. When the board approved the plan, you approved us to make tweaks. When DHS estimated tweaks. These were just kind of bigger tweaks that I wanted to publicly share, right? It's. I felt like it should, it should be a public conversation for these ones, because they were slightly about, they were about tier three. Let me know when you're ready and I'll, I'll go through them. Does everyone have the document?
Let's see that.
I, I, I read it at home.
Larry, have you seen that document?
Yes, I have.
Okay, great.
Any non-publics, Mike?
No.
Oh.
Oh, I missed an opportunity. I haven't been hanging out with you enough lately, Pete. I missed an opportunity to get you there. Should have milked that until nine twenty. All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna get going here, because this really, we really should be clear about it, and I'll, I'll just read them. Um, the addition to the reopening plan around our in-school without restrictions. In-school with restrictions, hybrid and remote learning is as follows. Um, we're going to add the, the language throughout the twenty to twenty-one school year. We may move back and forth between the various tiers of the plan as the need arises. The moves may occur in a progressive manner, with the oldest students moving to remote learning first, and in this order, high school. Middle school, memorial school in baking. Moves to cohort models within tier three will be done as a result of school transmission. So what that's basically saying is when we have staffing shortages, we're gonna try to keep baking open as long as possible, just like we did before Christmas. It just makes it in the plan, so everyone knows it's what's gonna happen. And I thought it was really fair that the staff brought that up. They said, well, that's not really in the plan. And I said, you're right. But it's the right thing to do, so we'll, we'll, we'll fix that. Um, and then if you look under tier three, there's a, a blue line that says, you know, currently, our program says that tier three is cohorts defined as. Like an A group and a B group. You're in school two days a week, A group, and two days a week, B group. We're saying that the Department of Ed has advised me that a cohort can also be, when you have a group of students remote and a group of students in person, like we do right now. So right now, the data shows that we are in. Uh, we are technically in tier three right now, because we have students hybrid, they're remote, and students in person. Now, if we start to see school-wide transmission of COVID. We have to have a conversation about moving to a group A and a group B, because we need to lessen the number of students in the building. If we start to see school-wide transmission. So what this does is it gives us the flexibility to do that quickly if we have. Um, um, school-wide transmission, but it also acknowledges what we're really doing right now, which is that we really technically are in. Tier three, which is that we've got a group of students remote and a group of students in person. We have a lot of remote students. Yeah.
If I, if I might, so for the benefit of anybody watching, what we're really doing here is catching up on the documentation, because we've had to be fleet of foot to adjust to what's going on to the best interest of the students. Yes. And now we're trying to make sure that the documentation matches what we've had to do in order to service the people.
Yes. Yes, it's a perfect example of a living document. We, we're, we're living with it and we're, we're dealing with this as we go. And we just needed to get, that was perfect. It needed to be caught up, yep. So then the next change is uh, um, in the schedule for tier three. If you look at the block, it says students attend classes in person in cohorts, two days a week, or the new language added is. Classes may be offered synchronously, asynchronously and synchronously to separate groups. So that also just reflected and updated. That language to be congruent with what we're actually doing. And um, the last part was around the health screening flow chart. So if you scroll down to the bottom, it has the original language. Um, which reads, if the district learns of a student or staff member who has tested positive for COVID nineteen. The district will work with local health officials who support the district in notifications. And contact tracing. In accordance with state and local laws and regulations, the district will notify other appropriate staff. While maintaining confidentiality in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA. And the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act of nineteen ninety-six HIPAA. Um, the student with COVID nineteen will not be allowed to return to school until they have a note from medical profession. Professionals stating that they have been cleared to return. So there's been updated guidance. This isn't a game of kind of. This is just changing it to fit the new guidance. The new guidance now would be, um, the last sentence would now read. Students or staff who have tested positive for COVID nineteen can be allowed to return to school when the following conditions are met. At least ten days have passed since symptoms onset and. At least twenty-four hours have passed since the resolution of fever without the use of fever-reducing medications. And other symptoms have approved. And our district physician did approve this language. So we actually called the doctor. Um, there are some cheats, minor, minor changes in the language up above in the, the flow chart. Which changes from fourteen days to ten days per the change in the state rule about quarantining. So originally, they had to quarantine for fourteen days. Now people only have to quarantine for ten, particularly around travel. Right? If you've traveled out of the state. So if you've traveled out of New England, the rule used to be that you had to quarantine for fourteen days. Now you only have to quarantine for ten. That's the summary, and I just need a motion to approve. Uh, the changes. Uh, felt like this one kinda needed to just be publicing with the board.
Hey, I, I move to approve the changes as proposed by the administration to update documentation on the reentry plan.
Hey, uh, we'll call vote to approve. Oh, discussion. Larry?
Yes.
Yes.
Don?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
And yes for myself. Fault budget.
Did they sign it? Then we're good.
And uh, second public comment.
Come on.
Kevin Holt, Kingston. Um. I also, I, I wanna echo what. Um, Mr. Ambrose said about the teachers. I am sure that they all appreciate your support. Of this contract going forward. Um, especially in this year. Uh, they've, I, I work with them every day. And um, they have really. Um. Can't express the amount of times, not only have they, they've done a bunch of work, but then they've had to change direction and redo that work. Um, so that they could teach in a different manner. I, it would, the recommendation on the warrant article means a lot. I, I would hope, um, and it would, it would go a long way if the board members, um. Publicly, um, when they get the chance at the deliberative session, privately, if they're communicating with the constituents. Uh, to express why they recommend. The passing of the teachers and the administrative contracts. And I thought Mister Fitzpatrick said it really well. And I hope he repeats that as much as it pains him over and over and over again. Because the quality of the teachers that you have cannot be replaced every overnight. And every time you lose a teacher, I'm sure Mister Ambrose can correct me on this if I'm wrong. It costs between twenty and thirty thousand dollars to bring them up to speed. And.
Depends on the teacher, but yes, the national average is around ten, but we do a lot here, so.
So I'm sure we don't want to um, have to spend that money. And your. Um. Your recommendation and attitude towards that warrant article will go a long way towards the community passing it, because you have. Uh, you, this board in particular seems to have. Earned their trust and respect. So, uh, that's all I've got to say, and thank you very much for the time and effort you have been putting in with especially respect to athletics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for sitting through this whole thing.
Yeah.
Hey, cool.
All right, so. On the next meeting, if the board has anything to, they wanted on the agenda, please get it in by Thursday the fourteenth. Next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, January twentieth, twenty twenty-one at six P M. In the library at the Sanborn Regional High School. A public hearing on donations will begin at six thirty. And the Budget Committee will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January fourteen, twenty twenty-one at seven P M in the auditorium of the Sanborn Regional High School. The snow date is Friday, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The filing period for positions on the Ri- Sanborn Regional School Board. The Sanborn Regional Budget Committee and the District Moderator will open on Wednesday, January twentieth, twenty twenty-one. And end on Friday, January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one at five P M. The candidate filing forms will be obtained at the S A U office from eight A M to four P M. Located in the Christie Building at fifty-one Church Street in Kingston. The school district clerk will be available on the last day to file up to five P M. The first deliberative session of the annual school district meeting will be held on Wednesday, February third. Twenty twenty-one at seven P M in the auditorium at the Sanborn Regional High School. The snow date is Wednesday, February fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Chairman?
Yes.
I don't think we can have Wednesday being the third and Wednesday being the fourth.
Hmm.
Oh, good catch, good catch.
Like, it should be Thursday?
Yes. Yes.
Thursday before.
I wanted to see how that was gonna go down.
I'm gonna, I, I don't know for a second.
That's not bad.
Yes.
At least not in the same year.
Pete, Pete, don't let Maria tell you you're not sharp at your, at this stage in your life, okay? Cause.
I just wanted to show Phyllis made a mistake, finally. Finally, she made a mistake. I mean, write that down in the minutes, will you please? She hasn't made one since I've known her, and now.
Right.
She's human.
Okay, the second voting session of the annual school district meeting, that's the one at the polls. Will be head on, held on Tuesday, March ninth, twenty twenty-one at eight P A M to eight P M in the Swayze Gym Seminary Campus for Kingston. Voters and in the Newton Town Hall for Newton voters. There's no other business?
One thing?
Yep.
I just, we all, um, when we came in, we all had these, just these masks I'm wearing. And um, some hand sanitizer, uh, looks like it's courtesy of SORAC, so I just wanted to acknowledge and say thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Charlotte Scott had these made for all of the school districts she serves. Hundreds and hundreds of them, thousands of them.
The money was funded through a grant?
Yes, it was funded through a grant. And I have to tell you, I, it's super comfortable.
Yeah, it is.
Like, I don't like wearing a mask, but this one's been great.
Most masks are too big for me, so.
Yeah. We'll get you another one, Pete, don't worry.
Well, no, I figured a student, a student athlete especially, it's more appropriate for her than for me.
That's all right, we'll get you one, buddy.
And she was my next door neighbor until I moved last couple of weeks ago.
Meeting adjourned.